It being June 29, 2020, at 7:10, I call the town meeting to order. I will entertain a motion to admit. Ms. Mani-Pelli.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the following persons be admitted to the meeting. Darren Klein, Maureen Doherty, Janet Murphy, Sharon Kelleher, Maureen Stevens, Robert Collins, Harold S. Miller, Jr., Matthew Cooper, Allison Kane, Mark Hamel, Michael Connolly, Jason Smith, Sudhir El Pavar Luru, Phil Healy, Al Pereira, Patrick Daly, Rob Carbone, Lisa Di Mayo.
No. Sorry.
That's okay. On the motion to admit, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Unanimous? Ms. Mani-Pelli, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Just if I could go over a few of the rules for tonight. So first of all, please turn off your cellphones. Also, all registered voters are wearing a badge with a red border. All visitors are wearing a badge with blue. I would also call your attention, you all have this handout on your chairs. The town and school officials have worked very collaboratively to get this town meeting together tonight in a safe manner. It was a pleasure to work with all of them on that. Along those lines, the town meeting will be slightly abbreviated, so they've kept the warrant to the minimum. We encourage people to stick to the issues at hand and not expand on something beyond the motion on the floor. If you do, I will stop you so that we can keep the meeting moving. If you wish to speak, please raise your hand and a microphone will be brought to you so that you can speak. You may lower your mask in order to speak. Wait till I call on you before you do speak. And at the conclusion of the meeting, we just ask that you stay, remain in your seat and we'll release them row by row, all three. With that, I will entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the warrant.
Mr. Moderator, I move to dispense with the reading of the warrant and to refer to the articles by number and further to dispense with the reading of the return of service by the constable.
On the motion, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Unanimous. One order of business, I forgot. The teller for this evening, if we take a hand count, will be Rita Mullen. Thank you, Rita. Article one, Mr. Walna.
I move to amend the FY 2020 operating budget voted under Article 15 of the June 10, 2019 annual town meeting as follows. Transfer $130,000 from FY 2020 Water Department retained earnings to line 101, Water Department expenses. Confirm and approve all previous appropriations applied to fund the cost items contained in the first year of a collective bargaining agreement between the Town of North Reading and North Reading Police Union, Massachusetts Coalition of Police, Local 456, covering the period of July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2022, as specified in Article 1, as printed
A recommendation on the motion, Mr. Walna.
Select Board recommends.
For the Finance Committee, Mrs. Horvath.
Finance Committee recommends.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Article two, Mr. Walna.
Fund FY 2020 snow and ice deficit. I move to transfer from free cash the sum of $220,000 to fund a deficit in the FY 2020 snow and ice budget, as specified in Article two, as printed in the warrant.
Recommendation for the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Walna.
Select Board recommends.
For the Finance Committee, Mrs. Horvath.
Finance Committee recommends.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Article three, Mr. Walna.
FY 2020 appropriate funds to capital improvement stabilization fund. I move to transfer from cash the sum of $1,050,000 to be added to the capital improvement stabilization fund, as specified in Article three, as printed in the warrant.
Recommendation for the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Walna.
Select Board recommends.
For the Finance Committee, Mrs. Horvath.
Finance Committee recommends.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Unanimous. Article four, Mr. Walna.
FY 2020 transfer funds to water stabilization fund. I move to transfer from FY 2020 Water Department retained earnings, the sum of $321,173, to be added to the water infrastructure stabilization fund, as specified in Article four, as printed
Recommendation for the Board, for the Select Board. Ah, I finally caught myself. For the Select Board, Mr. Walna.
Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee, Mrs. Horvath.
Finance Committee recommends.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those, say aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Article five, Mr. Walna.
FY 2020 appropriate money to stabilization fund. I move to transfer from free cash the sum of $583,793.98 to be added to the stabilization fund, as specified in Article five, as printed in the warrant.
Recommendation for the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Walna.
Select Board recommends.
The Finance Committee, Mrs. Horvath.
Finance Committee recommends.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Article six, Ms. Gonzalez.
I move to pass over Article six.
Recommendation for the Select Board, Ms. Gonzalez.
Recommend to pass over. Recommend to pass over.
Ms. Horvath.
Finance Committee recommends passing over Article six.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Article seven, Ms. Gonzalez.
I move to transfer from line 55, solid waste management, in the FY 2020 operating budget, voted under Article 15 of the June 10, 2019 town meeting, the sum of $30,000 to be added to the solid waste stabilization fund, as specified in Article seven, as
Recommendation for the Select Board.
Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Article eight, Ms. Gonzalez.
I move to authorize the Select Board to choose all necessary town officers, not elected by ballot, and to determine what instructions shall be given.
Recommendation.
Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee.
No action required.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Article nine, Ms. Gonzalez.
I move to accept the printed town report for the calendar year 2019, as the report of town officers and committees.
Recommendation for the Select Board.
Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee.
No action required.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Article 10, Ms. Gonzalez.
I move to authorize the Director of the Department of Public Works to accept easements on behalf of the town, as specified in Article 10, as printed in the warrant.
Recommendation for the Select Board.
Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Article 11.
Article 11. I move to authorize the Treasurer to enter into compensating balance agreements, as specified in Article 11, as printed in the warrant.
Recommendation for the Select Board, Mr. Studo.
Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Article 12, Mr. Studo.
Article 12. I move to appropriate such sum as may be allotted from the Chapter 90 appropriation or other state roadway reimbursement programs for the purpose of constructing, reconstructing, or maintaining roadways within the Town of North Reading, as specified in Article 12, as printed in the warrant.
Recommendation for the Select Board, Mr. Studo.
Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Article 13, Mr. Studo.
I move to transfer from FY 2020 operating budget line six, the sum of $2,363, to pay bills of a prior year for property and casualty insurance deductibles, to transfer from FY 2020 operating budget line 105, the sum of $174,000 to pay bills of a prior year for sanitation services, and to transfer from FY 2020 operating budget line 50, the sum of $15,387.06 to pay bills of a prior year for fire department radios, as specified in Article 13, as printed in the warrant.
Recommendation for the Select Board, Mr. Studo.
Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee, Ms. Horvath.
Finance Committee recommends.
This requires a fourth is vote, but the way we're going, I don't think that'll be a problem. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Article 14, Ms. Mani-Pelli.
I move to raise and appropriate and transfer the sums set forth in the column-headed Select Board recommended in lines 1 through 112, excluding line 99, debt service, including the transfer of other funds, and to increase line 79, public school salaries, by $66,438, for an overall FY 2021 operating budget sum totaling $77,003,665, and also to eliminate the $150,000 in funding from the OPEB trust fund for line 33, pensions and benefits, and instead raise and appropriate said funding, and further to eliminate $50,000 in free cash funding for line 53, DPW Capital, and instead raise and appropriate said funding, all as set forth in the budget detail dated June 29, 2020, as printed in the warrant and amended in this motion, and further that the lines for department salaries and expenses shall be considered a single appropriation for each department, except for line 98, which shall be for purposes of paying assessments to Northeast Metropolitan Regional Vocational High School and Essex North Shore Agricultural and Technical High School, as specified in Article 14, as printed in the warrant.
Recommendation for the Select Board.
Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends.
I'm sorry, School Committee, recommendation.
School Committee recommends as well.
Sorry about that. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Article 14 has two motions, because the second motion, which is debt service, requires a two-thirds vote, so we have to be certain on that. Ms. Mani-Pelli.
I move to raise and appropriate and transfer the sums set forth in the column-headed Select Board recommended, line 99, debt service, in the amount of $7,904,789, including the transfer of other funds, all as set forth in the budget detail dated June 29, 2020,
Select Board recommendation.
Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends.
School Committee.
School Committee recommends.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Article 15, Ms. Mani-Pelli.
I move to appropriate amounts to purchase items of a capital nature, in the amounts and for the purposes as specified in Article 15, as printed in the warrant, with the exception of the project entitled Replace F-350 Pickup Truck for the Water Department, which shall be funded by a transfer of $53,000 from the Water Infrastructure Stabilization Fund, including equipping vehicles and for all items, all incidental and related costs, and furthermore, in all instances where bond is listed as a source of funds, said borrowing will be pursuant to Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 44, Section 7, 1, or any other enabling authority, and to authorize the Treasurer with the approval of the Select Board to borrow said specified sums and issue bonds and notes therefore, and further that any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, less any such premium applied to the payment of costs of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote, in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 20, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount.
Select Board recommendation.
Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends.
School Committee.
School Committee recommends.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Article 16, Ms. Mani-Pelli.
I move to transfer from free cash the sum of $200,000 for the purposes of funding FY 2021 retirement obligations for town employees, as specified in Article 16, as printed in
Select Board recommendation.
Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Article 17, Ms. Mani-Pelli.
I move to raise and appropriate the sum of $300,000 for the purposes of funding the other post-employment benefits liability trust fund, as specified in Article 17, as
Select Board recommendation.
Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Article 18, Ms. Mani-Pelli.
I move to transfer the sum of $102,083.50 from free cash, and the sum of $97,916.50 from FY 2020 line seven, Town Council Special Litigation Budget, to fund expenses for 20 Elm Street litigation, including legal costs, consultants, engineers, and costs related thereto, as specified in Article 18, as printed in the warrant.
Select Board recommendation.
Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Article 19, Mr. O'Leary.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and just as quite a privilege, thank you all for coming tonight and allowing us to get our budget passed, keep our fiscal house in order, and move on with the town's business. So I greatly appreciate everybody coming up tonight, and I greatly appreciate the cooperation between the boards and working with the moderator to get everything done this evening. It's been quite an undertaking, and it's quite a feat to pull it off, so you'd be congratulated and thanked for coming out. Mr. Moderator, Article 19. Authorize the lease of land roof space for solar photovoltaic facilities. I move to transfer the care, custody, and control of parcels of land located at 189 Park Street, North Reading, shown on Assessors Map 41, as parcel 140, and known as the North Reading Middle School High School, from the School Committee, for the purposes for which it is currently held, to the School Committee, for school-related purposes, and for the purpose of, one, leasing building rooftop space in any unused open land areas for the installation of solar photovoltaic facilities, and, two, granting easements on over and under said parcels of land, in connection with such solar photovoltaic facilities, as specified in Article 19, as printed in the warrant.
Select Board recommendation, Mr. O'Leary.
Select Board unanimously recommends.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee unanimously recommends.
School Committee.
School Committee unanimously recommended at our last meeting.
Any discussion? Mr. Yul.
Just wait a minute. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. To you, first of all, I echo your thoughts, your acceptance of people attending here. It's a treatable to see everybody here. To the School Committee, did you give any thought to a system that they use in Weyman School System, where they put these structures in the driveways in such a way that they were high enough to gather in some ways as required, as needed, and also gave protection to cars while they are parked in a lot? Did you give any thought to that? Was that part of the conversation? And if it was, was the utilizing roofs more cost-effective than that option?
Mr. Clonely.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mr. Yul, did you give thought to several options that were available, including the proposal that you're referring to, which would be a parking canopy? And based on the analysis that was done, the solar rooftop array project on the middle school high school roof, as well as the potential for the ground array, was more cost-effective than the parking canopy because of the ability of construction costs in the market to do that right now. It would cost a lot more to do that.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Unanimous. Article 20, Mr. O'Leary.
Mr. Moderator, I move to authorize the School Committee to enter into one or more electricity supply on billed credit or similar agreements with the owner or owners of solar photovoltaic facilities to be installed at the North Reading Middle School High School, as specified in Article 20, as printed in the warrant.
Recommendation for the Select Board.
Select Board unanimously recommends.
Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee voted not to recommend this, but you need to understand why. At the time that we voted, we would likely believe that this was going to be cast over and was not something that the School Department had an issue with. In fact, they looked at whether or not it was one cost-effectiveness, or rightly whether they should get electricity from your roof. This warrant would have given them electricity from your roof. Hence, with the understanding that this was probably going to be cast over, the Finance Committee voted no. The Finance Committee cannot vote to pass over an article if the Board of Selectmen has not taken any action on it. As the Board of Selectmen have not made one recommendation, one or the other, the only thing we could do was vote no.
For the School Committee, Mr. Buckley.
The School Committee votes in favor, 5-0 as well.
Any further discussion?
Just as a point of clarification, the Board of Selectmen voted to recommend this. And again, this is just another option or opportunity that would be presented to the School Committee to exercise, if it so chose, that it was in its best interest to do so. So the Board unanimously recommended doing this at the time. So we would urge town meeting to support. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Ma'am, there's a microphone coming to you. Please state your name and address for the record, if you would, please.
Kathy O'Donnell, Boston, twenty-eight Orchard Drive. I did not hear what the finance committee said. The finance committee voted no, because it was our understanding at the time we voted that this article would be passed over. If we were to vote again today, we would be in support of it.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous, Article twenty-one, Mr. O'Leary.
Mr. Moderator, I move to authorize the select board to enter into one or more agreements for payments in lieu of taxes, pilots pursuant to General Law, Chapter fifty-nine, subsection thirty-eight HB, with the owner, owners of solar photovoltaic facilities to be installed at the North Reading Middle School and High School for such terms of years, and on such terms, such other terms and conditions as the select board deems in the best interest of the town, as specified in Article twenty-one, as printed in the warrant.
Recommendation for the select board?
Select board unanimously recommends.
Finance committee?
Finance committee unanimously recommends.
School committee, Mr. Buckley?
The school committee also previously voted to recommend five zero.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous, Mr. O'Leary, Article twenty-two.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town establish pursuant to Chapter forty, Section three, a school rental revolving fund for the purpose of receiving certain rental payments for the leasing of surplus space in or on a school, and to accept the provision in Chapter forty, Section three, that allows funds to be expended for the upkeep and maintenance of any facility under the control of the school committee, and for any balance to remain in said account, rather than to revert to the general fund, as specified in Article twenty-two, as printed in the warrant.
Recommendation for the select board?
Select board unanimously recommends.
Finance committee?
Finance committee unanimously recommends.
School committee?
The school committee previously voted to recommend five zero.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'm sorry, Mr. Yul. I'm sorry, Mr. Yul.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I just want to make sure that I understand, I know what the revolving account is, but what rentals are we talking about as far as revenue that is going into the revolving account?
Mr. O'Leary.
It is the intention of the school committee and the town administrator and the select board to enter into agreements with someone to rent the space, so that revenue will be generated and put into this revolving account, rather than into the general fund, and then those funds can be expended to offset the energy costs associated with operating the schools, as opposed to going into, coming free cash every year. So we just want to put it into a revolving fund, so the revenue that's generated is spent for an intended purpose to offset the costs of energy.
Do you, Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Yul.
So this would be able to, when the facilities generate the revenue, and the revenue goes straight to the school, and not through the town?
No, again, all it's going to do is, through the chair, Mr. Moderator.
Mr. O'Leary.
Yeah, no, all it's going to do is, it's going to, the revenue that's generated is going to offset the energy costs and utility costs for the school. So whatever, you collect ten thousand dollars, that ten thousand dollars, instead of going to the general fund, which usually what happens when you collect money, is going to go into this revolving account, which then will be allocated through the budgetary process to offset school costs, energy costs, and utility costs. Mr. Yul, directly.
Do you, Mr. Moderator, with the funds that they raise, if they had excess funds in their revolving account, would those funds be able to be used for anything else?
Mr. O'Leary.
I can assure you that the revenues that are generated by this particular lease agreement will not exceed the energy costs of operating the school's facilities. So you don't have to worry about any extra revenue being available. What it's going to do is, it's going to free up more cash for educational purposes.
Mr. Yul.
Do you, Mr. Moderator, you can assure me, I just, you can assure the public, that doesn't really answer the question, does it? If it happens, what's the options under those circumstances?
If it were to happen, the money would stay in this revolving account, again, to offset annual energy and utility costs for the school department. So if there's a surplus, it'd stay in that account, and the only way it's going to come out of that account is through town meeting action.
Thank you very much.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous, Article twenty-three, Mr. O'Leary.
Mr. Moderator, I move to authorize the school committee, or a designee thereof, and the town administrator, or a designee thereof, to enter into a contract or contracts for the installation of LED lighting fixtures for a lease term in excess of three years, but not to exceed five years, including any extension or renewal thereof or option under an existing contract, upon such terms and conditions determined by the school committee or designee and the town administrator or designee, to be in the best interest of the town, provided, however, that prior to executing a contract for a term in excess of three years, the school committee or designee shall certify in writing to the town administrator that such longer term will enable the town to secure more favorable terms, considering price, expected useful life of the lighting fixtures, and any other relevant factors that would otherwise be available under a contract with a three-year term, as specified in Article twenty-three, as printed in the warrant.
Recommendation for the select board, Mr. O'Leary?
Select board unanimously recommends.
Finance committee?
Finance committee unanimously recommends.
School committee?
The school committee previously voted to recommend five zero.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous, Article twenty-four, Mr. O'Leary.
Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer from overlay reserve the sum of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars to fund the fiscal year twenty twenty-two property revaluation as specified in Article twenty-four, as printed in the warrant.
Recommendation for the select board, Mr. O'Leary?
Board of Selectmen unanimously recommends.
Finance committee?
Finance committee unanimously recommends.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. I'll entertain one more motion for this evening.
Mr. Moderator, I move to adjourn this meeting, seen ADA.
Church lap. Before we, I'll take a moment before we vote on the motion, again, thank you for attending tonight, and my special thanks to all the school and municipal officials and all the boards and committees I discussed holding this town meeting with, and I'm happy we were able to get this done for the community. So thank you all very much. Please stay in your seats. You'll be out of here quickly enough, but we'll list them row by row so we don't get a backup at the doors. On the motion to adjourn, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous. Enjoy the rest of your evening. Thank you so much.